Yes, that are we are monitoring. Also, I just to, I wasn't going to go to the Sheriff's Fall Conference. Friday, I decided to go. And so I don't have a travel request in. It'll get in on the sixth, but that's the day I'm supposed to be in Pierce. So unless you have some objection, then I'd like to go to the conference. It's after the agenda came out the second time. There's a lot of good stuff on here because I'm in the process of, I have a draft of my use of force policy and the safety benefits is going to be out there. So there's, you know, we're going to talk about, you know, the impact of law enforcement agents following the death of George Floyd in Minneapolis and the use of force, lethal and less lethal options, de-escalation, chokeholds, neck restraints, duty to intervene, and those types of things. So it's going to be, you know, I think it's still going to be a good short conference. There's no banquets and things like that, but I think there's going to be a lot of good stuff in those three days. So anyway, unless you guys have any questions.
Marty, I had a question. Do you know of other counties that have not resumed their 24/7 testing due to COVID? Are you aware of any counties that still have it shut down?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Because there was talk at one of these legislative functions that some of our District Seven guys were attending that there's still problems that other counties are having with COVID testing. And I think you deserve. Still make sure that we have people on 24/7 because that, other counties aren't as, well, they've had some problems with that. So I think your staff deserves credit for that, to make sure that we're still holding people accountable, but doing it in a safe way.
Yeah, yeah. My staff has to be commended on this. You know, I require masks in the back, of course, and then other agencies coming in. And, you know, if we do have someone that comes down with COVID back there, we're able to. Dan's good to work with, but sometimes we can get him out on, out on. So if they're a threat to society, we got to put them in jail, of course, and protect them. But there was a couple of weeks ago, there was still a. Moved upstairs or whatever. And there were some counties that never closed, you know, like Lake County never closed, but they haven't had a real issue there with, with COVID yet. With their college, they're still got low numbers there. But, you know, we've spiked and. And then, and then safety benefits like Brian was saying was in the office too. And, you know, just preliminary, it looks like everything is good. You know, one good thing about, and I think this has to contribute to my staff too, is that, you know, we have a, we have a very low payout rate in the insurance. I think two of the biggest items we've had is probably a couple of police cars that have hit deer and so forth. But, you know, we. Following policy and doing those types of things.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Yeah. You guys, it's okay to go to Pier. I haven't, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Hill.
Good morning.
Morning.
On the census, the, people can still self-report. The, the number as of September 17th was the county had 70.1% self-response rate. That's anywhere from online, mail, and phone. And as of September 20th, our overall rate, this is, this counts the census barrel, people going out and knocking on doors, our number was up to 93.8%. So the message is getting out. Some states are up into the 99s by now, and it just depends on how many census people they've actually got on the ground. You know, we, we did have some, some funding that we paid on some advertising, and I was able to visit the radio station on Thursdays and put out the message as much as we possibly could. So it looks like it's working. We're at 93%. Obviously, we'd love to be at a, at 100% by now, but we're still working on it. Right now, the census is scheduled to end on September 30th. You never know what happens with Washington DC, whether that's going to be extended or not. But right now, we're at 93.8% and still moving. So. And September is National Preparedness Month. I've been on the radio September 3rd, 10th, and 17th so far. I'm scheduled to go on the 17th, uh, scheduled to go on the 24th, which is Thursday. And we started with, with planning and we, last week, we talked about what kind of hazards Brookings County has experienced in the past. And this week, it's assisting children or helping children understand about hazards and things like that. So we'll, we'll keep moving along on that. September 14th and 15th, I did attend the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners in Sioux Falls. Those meetings was all good. September 16th, we had a South Dakota Pipeline Zoom meeting that I attended. On the 18th, I did a Rural Action Committee for NACO online meeting. This afternoon, we've got a South Dakota Emergency Management Regional Exercise. It's going to be once again on Zoom, and me and Richard will be doing that from 1:00 to 3:00. Tomorrow, COVID-19 community phone call has been canceled. That should resume next week. Last week's meeting didn't bring out anything overly, overly pressing. Monday, there is an ad hoc drainage committee meeting. That agenda will be going out later today. It's being reviewed by the chairperson now, and once, once I get their blessing, I will go ahead and send that agenda out. That will be from 9:00 to 11:00 in this room here. October 2nd, there's an emergency management briefing with South Dakota State University's senior class of the ROTC on the Army side. We give a briefing once a year. We take them to the actual EOC, explain to them. Last year, we got real good results. Well, actually, from earlier this year, we got real good results. One of the ROTC lieutenants now that he wrote back to his South Dakota State University professor and said, "Thank you for the class that we had from the emergency manager." The part about, about some of the actions that the National Guard is supposed to do was really spot on, and so they was at least aware of some of the civil actions that the National Guard can do. Because that's all within the FEMA. We've got a big FEMA book on that that explains how my office can work with the National Guard and how all that works with the financing and how many people we need and all that. So that was good. I have been appointed to the Rural Action Committee for NACO and also been reappointed to the Justice and Public Safety Policy Steering Committee. That's the policy where emergency manager falls under. It's also jails. Every now and then, you see me forward you an email on jails or something. That's where, where that comes from, is that steering committee. We talked about the census. I am going to start ICS training this fall. Some of the commissioners that might be elderly might remember back in 2013 and 14, we did some Incident Command System training, and we're going to start that back up again. And then.
Yes, that are we're monitoring. Also, I just to. I wasn't going to go to the Sheriff's Fall Conference. Friday, I decided to go. And so I don't have a travel request in it'll get in on the sixth, but that's the day I'm supposed to be in Pierce. So unless you have some objection, then I'd like to go to the conference. It's after the agenda came out the second time. There's a lot of good stuff on here because I'm in the process of of I have a draft of my use of force policy and the safety benefits is going to be out there. So there's we're, you know, we're going to talk about, you know, the impact of law enforcement agents is following the death of George Floyd in Minneapolis and the use of force lethal and less lethal options, de-escalation, chokeholds, neck restraints, duty to intervene and those types of things. So it's going to be, you know, I think it's still going to be a good short conference. There's no banquets and things like that, but I think there's going to be a lot of good stuff in those three days. So anyway, unless you guys have any questions.
Marty, I had a question. Do you know of other counties that have not resumed their 24/7 testing due to COVID? Are you aware of any counties that still have it shut down?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Because there was talk at one of these legislative functions that some of our District Seven guys were attending that there's still problems that other counties are having with COVID testing, and I think you deserve. Still make sure that we have people on 24/7 because that other counties aren't as well. They've they've had they've had some problems with that. So I think your staff deserves credit for that to make sure that we're still holding people accountable, but doing it in a safe way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My staff has to be commended on this. You know, I require masks in the back, of course, and then other agencies coming in. And, and, you know, if we do have someone that comes down with COVID back there, we're able to. And Dan's good to work with it. Sometimes we can get him out on out on. So if they're a threat to society, we got to put them in jail, of course, and protect them. But there was a couple of weeks ago, there was still. Moved upstairs or whatever. And there were some counties that never closed, you know, like Lake County never closed, but they haven't had a real issue there with with COVID yet with their college. They're still got low numbers there. But, you know, we've spiked and. And then and then safety benefits like Brian was saying was in the office, too. And, you know, just preliminary, it looks like everything is good. You know, one good thing about, and I think this has to contribute to my staff, too, is that, you know, we have a we have a very low payout rate in the insurance. I think two of the biggest items we've had is probably a couple of police cars that have hit deer and so forth. But, you know, we. Following policy and doing those types of things. So.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Yeah. You guys, it's okay to go to period. I haven't. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Hill.
Good morning.
Morning.
On the census, the people can still self-report. The the number as of September 17th was the county had 70.1% self-response rate. That's anywhere from online mail and phone. And as of September 20th, our overall rate, this is this counts the census barrel, people going out and knocking on doors. Our number was up to 93.8%. So the message is getting out. Some states are up into the 99s by now, and it just depends on how many census people they've actually got on the ground. You know, we we did have some some funding that we paid on some advertising, and I was able to visit the radio station on Thursdays and put out the message as much as we possibly could. So it looks like it's working. We're at 93%. Obviously, we'd love to be at a at 100% by now, but we're still working on it. Right now, the census is scheduled to end on September 30th. You never know what happens with Washington DC, whether that's going to be extended or not. But right now, we're 93.8% and still moving. So. And September is National Preparedness Month. I've been on the radio September 3rd, 10th, and 17th so far. I'm scheduled to go on the 17th, up scheduled to go on the 24th, which is Thursday. And we started with with planning and we last week, we talked about what kind of hazards Brookings County has experienced in the past. And this week, it's assisting children or helping children understand about hazards and things like that. So we'll we'll keep moving along on that. September 14th and 15th, I did attend the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners in Sioux Falls. Those meetings was all good. September 16th, we had a South Dakota Pipeline Zoom meeting that I attended. On the 18th, I did a Rural Action Committee for NACO online meeting. This afternoon, we've got a South Dakota Emergency Management Regional Exercise. It's going to be once again on Zoom, and me and Richard will be doing that from 1:00 to 3:00. Tomorrow's COVID-19 community phone call has been canceled. That should resume next week. Last week's meeting didn't bring out anything overly overly pressing. Monday, there is an ad hoc drainage committee meeting. That agenda will be going out later today. It's being reviewed by the chairperson now. And once, once I get their blessing, I will go ahead and send that agenda out. That will be from 9:00 to 11:00 in this room here. October 2, there's an emergency management briefing with South Dakota State University Senior Class of the ROTC on the Army side. We give a briefing once a year. We take them to the actual EOC, explain to them. Last year, we got real good results. Well, actually, from earlier this year, we got real good results. One of the ROTC lieutenants now that he wrote back to his South Dakota State University professor and said, thank you for the class that we had from the emergency manager. The the part about about some of the actions that the National Guard is supposed to do was really spot on. And so they was at least aware of some of the civil actions that the National Guard can do because that's all within the FEMA. We've got a big FEMA book on that that explains how my office can work with the National Guard and how all that works with the financing and how many people we need and all that. So that was good. I have been appointed to the Rural Action Committee for NACO and also been reappointed to the Justice and Public Safety Policy Steering Committee. That's the policy where emergency manager falls under. It's also jails. Every now and then you see me forward you a email on jails or something. That's where where that comes from is that steering committee. We talked about the census. I am going to start ICS training this fall. Some of the commissioners that might be elderly might remember back in 2013 and 14, we did some Incident Command System training, and we're going to start that back up again. And then this time after the training, we're going to have laptops set up. I'm having people get their FEMA identification numbers through me. And if I give you your Incident Command System training, we're going to take a test and get you a nice certificate from FEMA. It's basically all online, but we'll we'll set it up with the departments, and we'll have various different days of training so we can get anybody that wants the Incident Command System training, they'll be able to get it. And of course, our Emergency Operations System main core will be required to have that training. So. And then on the COVID funding that Ms. Buseff discussed, as a commissioner, you need to understand, we we sent the documentation in saying for my salaries, we are not accepting the FEMA 7520, 75 or 50%, where they pay 50% of my salary. We we waived that for this year to go over to the COVID side. So just just be aware of that. There's no, we're not allowed to double dip on that. And everything else, I think I did send out a report on on the Platts, and we can discuss that at later when the Platts do come up if you have any questions on it. Any questions on what I just put out?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Michael Houser, Health and Veterans Affairs, you're next.
Good morning.
Morning.
And and thank you for the early voting. It's very straightforward, and there's only three issues that resolutions or whatever on the ballot. So it was kind of neat. Actually, knew what they were all about this time. So to start off with, I did go to the that conference in Sioux Falls on the 14th and 15th. And one of the things they're doing is a legislative rewrite for the the welfare side of it. And I passed on that board so that Commissioner Boyer, can't say her name now, can sit on the board, and she'll be part of that. Boris, I've got to say my own commissioner's name. Anyway. As you probably saw that we're getting the BMU or the Brookings Municipal Utilities Shut Offs went into effect last week, and we were running around a lot. So we got quite a few claims on that. We're getting a lot more claims in for rents now, and now we're getting notified that Volga and Aurora will probably start doing shut offs. So our office will remain quite busy with the welfare side of things at this point. As far as the VA side, it's been fairly constant. Usually get two or three people a day, maybe four for VA claims. Otherwise, everything's going pretty well.
All right. Any questions for Mike? One question. Mr. Pierce.
With the federal mandate on evictions where they're frozen, but when when people fill that form out, one of the things that they have to say is that they've contacted any governmental entity that provides rent assistance. Are you seeing an uptick then?
Not a whole lot. Well, yeah, probably more than I shouldn't say not a whole lot. We are seeing some that are coming in, but we've not seen that form so much as people just coming in and asking for assistance. And most of the individuals that we're seeing are first time people. And so when someone comes in for ask for assistance, first thing we do is we pull up and see if they do have any outstanding monies with us. And most, I would say, probably 75% have never been in our office before. So that's showing that that the COVID is affecting a lot of people that were working and gotten laid off for reduced hours.
I just had a concern that in order to prevent the eviction under that mandate, they have to fill that form out and say that they've contacted that, which would include us. And if that if you think that's going to have any budgetary impact on your office between now and the end of December, when that ends, any thoughts on that?
You know, I haven't seen the form.
Okay.
But but I would. I don't think it's really going to have a whole lot of effect upon us.
I'll send you that.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. We do have a nine o'clock public hearing on our fiscal year 2021 annual budget. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made in second. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of the budget, provisional budget? Anybody who would like to speak in opposition to the fiscal budget? Any comments? Comments from the board? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
And you're you're taking action on the amendments, correct? These are the amendments for the.
The action to approve the amendments.
Okay.
The fiscal year 2021 provisional budget.
Can I jump in?
I do need to close the public hearing, too, since there were no comments. We'll get there. These are quicker ones. So it is on the amendment, and we're closing it. Stacy, you have some comments?
The changes that you see, I'm guessing are in front of you on the screen, have to be read into the minutes.
Would you like to do that?
I sure can. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll just kind of start going through this for current property taxes. This tax amount changes due to utilities and growth. This is in the general fund. It went from the provisional budget amount of $12,873,076 to $12,863,957. That's a decrease of $9,119. So that was that was the only change really in the general fund. Current property tax also changed due to utilities and growth in the building fund 301 from 326,811 to 326,571, a decrease of just $232. And then in the highway department for the big matching grant line, we had a decrease due to awarded applications. We between the provisional and now, we had some information that we received from applications that we submitted that we were approved for. So in 201, that line was at $8,383,225. It's now at $8,279,25, so a decrease of $104,200. What that also did in the Roden Bridge Fund was increase cash applied, actually, was kind of an increase to a negative. We're going to see some. What that means when we look at the budget document is we'll be increasing fund balance in that for so it went from a negative 203,629 to a negative 307,829, which is a, you know, revenue 104,200. That offsets that decrease in expense. And then revenue in the general fund, 101,360, from 216,288 to 224,528. That was an increase of $8,240. The revenue change in the building fund 301 from $40,710 to $40,942, an increase of $232. Now, both of those also reflect that the change in the property tax. The the left 5% general fund is went from $766,911 to $766,32, which was a decrease of $879. So if you take that with the $9,111 in the general fund, that's where we we come up with that. So it was enough of a change that it changed that 5% amount that we have to have set aside by law. And then the levy actually did go down a little bit. The general fund decreased again due to that utility from $3.932 cents to $3.9923, so a change of 9 plus 09, a decrease. Also, the jail levy expansion went from .153 to .152, difference of .001. And then so that total levy change was $4.185 down to $4.175, so a decrease of .010. That is it.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the amendments. I'm going to open the public hearing after that presentation. Is there any comments from the public? Any comments, pro or con from the public? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing now. Comments from the board? Any comments or questions?
I have two questions.
You may.
Stacy, do you remember what our levy was last year? When we got done, how much? What are we compared?
I don't know. Vicki has that at her fingertips.
I do not. I should have brought it with me, but it's down from what it was last year.
It did go down. If you give me just a second, I can I can get there.
And my second question, just to be thinking about while you're looking. So the jail. Got our percentage in there, and we're going to have a presentation in a few minutes on on the bond. We make payments next year on that? And how do we know what our levy amount is when we don't know what our interest rate is? How did that play together?
I can answer that. When we we talked to Colliers, and what they suggested that we would levy is $500,000 a year, and that would take care of whenever we did do the bonds, that would take care of the interest in the principal. So that's what we have been basing it off of is $500,000 according to his recommendation.
Thank you.
And then Leanne, the levy was $4.196 last year, and now this year, $4.175. So down. Point 021.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Krogman. Jensen. Pierce. Bartley. Motion carries.
I have two as an action to approve Resolution Number 20-51, adoption of the fiscal year 2021 annual budget for Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments on the amended budget? Questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We do have a 910 presentation of the 30% cost estimates for the 20th Street South Interchain Project. Jackie Lanning, City Engineer, is here. We're just amended early, so we'll get you started. Thank you, Jackie. Welcome.
Thank you. I wanted to give everybody an update today. Thank you for inviting me, your long awaited cost estimate update. First, I thought I would update every. And one thing people have asked me is whether the federal government was willing to adjust the timeline due to COVID slowdowns and so forth, and they they were not. Line that was outlined in our grant agreement. So in March and April of this year, we started traffic counts. We released our website and had landowner meetings. In May and June, we updated the IJR, and we started work on the EA. We also had a number of utility meetings trying to find utility conflicts and then started preliminary design. And then in July, we're still continuing to work on the EA and utility exploration and July and August here. And this is where we've determined the 30% cost estimate. September 1st, we were received our first grant agreement through the DOT and Federal Highway. And so one thing I wanted to point out is a big thank you to the DOT for administering this project. If they had not agreed to do that upfront, we would not have met these timelines because it would have meant is the city wouldn't have been able to start work until September 1st. So we would have lost all that design time. So thankfully, DOT was willing to administer the the project. And September and October here, we'll be working on continuing that draft EA, and we want to release it to the website for a public online meeting. And then there'll be a 30-day comment period. So we're striving very hard to release that. A lot of people want to see the information in the EA and what would be the recommended design. And then we also want to meet with landowners here soon in finalizing the right of way and then continuing the plan design based on that preferred alternative. So in November, December, we will finalize the EA, meet with landowners to talk about right of way purchases, and then we'll have an updated 60% cost estimate to come back to you with. And then in 2021, we'll be finalizing designs, purchasing right of way, purchasing wetland mitigation, and then really getting to that final cost estimate. And then the overall goal is to bid the project in September of 2021 and then be under construction in '22 and '23. We'd start in 2022 and then finish in 2023. And I wanted to point out, too, normally, this is about a four-year timeframe, all those tasks together. And in the build grant agreement, it's really done in about a year and a half. So a lot of these tasks are being handled concurrently, which is not the typical way they're done. But we're we're all, you know, a team effort on Federal Highway, DOT, the consultant in the city, really trying to accomplish this all in in a very quick timeframe. This is the section I brought to you. Our last meeting, we talked about the pavement sections. And again, this will be our design that we're looking at here, 36-foot wide street with curb and gutter on both sides, and then we'll have our pavement in the center. And so it'll look look much like 20th Street southwest of the water tower, west of Main Avenue is is what it would look like or and west of 22nd Avenue, too. I guess it it all has that same section. Okay, for your cost estimate, we've grouped the tasks. This is the way the build grant has these tasks grouped. So we have our grant agreement is issued to the city in two separate steps. The first step is this design, right of way, and DOT costs and utility relocation costs. And I believe wetland mitigation is in this first grant agreement also. So the grant application for the design, having the DOT have having us purchase right of way and then having DOT review the right of way, geotech review, and also plan review, and then the cost to actually relocate utilities. The grant application had 1.9 million, a little over that for that those tasks. So our 30% estimate, the agreements that we have in place right now, we're at about 2.8 for that. So this was some discussion earlier on, you know, we we realized upfront that we were over on some of our design costs. And just to refresh everybody's memory, we did have some costs that were not in the grant agreement, such as costs for the DOT to do that geotech work, plan review, and right of way appraisal review. And then the utility relocation costs were not included in the grant agreement. Our wetland mitigation has not been determined yet until we get through the environmental assessment process. So that is sitting there, $186,000 in in our grant agreement, and then that would be our current status. The construction administration in the grant agreement for DOT to to bid the project, do all the construction admin during the construction, and then close it out, that is still at 1.6 million. We haven't had an updated cost from DOT. So that is the same. It was in the grant agreement. We the grant application had just one type of pavement construction. It didn't say which, if it was asphalt or concrete. That was 19.6 million. And I came to your group here to talk about asphalt versus concrete pavement. And the it was requested by the consultant because they wanted to know what our subgrade elevation would be and then our thicknesses of pavement. So to them, it was it was important to decide on the pavement type. Since that meeting or that I had with you, the geotech office at the DOT has been doing some compression tests on our subgrade material type. And so they'll be making a recommendation on the pavement type. Even though I came to you and and we talked about concrete, we're not sure what pavement type DOT will recommend, and they're finishing these geotech tests. So they could come back and recommend asphalt due to settlement issues with the the height of the or the height of the embankment and then the type of material that we're working with. So the consultants put together to for you here in the 30% cost estimate, an estimate on the asphalt pavement and one on the concrete pavement. So I wanted to describe that a little further because I'm sure there's some questions. Well, we talked about using concrete. Why are we having an estimate for asphalt? Any questions on the pavement type?
No questions.
Okay. And so overall, in our grant agreement, the total project is $23.3 million. And so for from our total estimates here, we have asphalt construction at a little over 18.1 million, concrete construction estimated at 18.5 million. 18.1 million, concrete construction estimated at 18.5 million. And so our totals that we're having here is 22.8 million for the total project estimate with asphalt, and then 23.1 million with concrete. So the, so we will only bid one type of pavement, too, once it's determined by the, the DOT geotech office. And the, the main thing I wanted to point out here today is that we are under budget, which is great. And so I wanted to point out these dollars that are fitting within our, our grant budget. And we're also on time with our project, too, which is good, so far.
Any questions? No questions. Got by easy today, Jackie. Thank you.
Yeah, great. A good deal. It's always nice to come in with something that's under budget. And again, I'll come back at the 30%, and the, excuse me, the 60% and the 90% estimates. So we'll continue with design and right-of-way layouts. The one task we're trying to finish up here very shortly is to post that draft EA on our website for that 30-day public comment period. So here's our website, 20thstreetinterchange.com, and you'd be able to find a, a recorded meeting, and then they'll describe the alternatives, and the, and the EA will be on there for your reading enjoyment. It's about 200 pages long, so that'll be good for everybody to read. And then we'll meet with landowners based on the EA results, and then, like I mentioned, we're meeting our grant schedule, and, and so that we're, we're focusing very hard on, on keeping everything on time.
Any further questions?
I, I would just like to say to Jackie, thank you for all the work you're doing on this. This is good news today.
It's a team effort, definitely. There's a, there's a whole team of us that work very hard on, on this project, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
If not?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm gonna move back here. We had under routine business, item two is a 4-H report. We have the PDF on that. Stacy, do you know was Sonia gonna make any report physically here, or just noted that we've got the document?
I think we just note that we have the document.
Okay. Any questions on the document? All right, we've got that covered. And the finance officer's report we did get already, be it noted items in the...
Misty did ask me to make a few comments. She is out spraying this morning, taking advantage of this good weather, working on townships and the county roads. We did have our annual weed tour on the 10th. It was a good tour. Denny Carmichael, our enforcement officer, gave a good report. I feel he's doing a super job. Yeah, he's had, we've received a lot of compliments from the public, how, how personable he is, and he explains himself well out in the field, and really getting along with the public out there, and making sure that the weeds are getting sprayed or taken care of. But it was all good meeting. Misty was just sorry she couldn't be here.
Thank you. Any other reports I may have missed? Saying none, let's move on to our regular business. We do have a 9:45 schedule, so we've got time here. We're gonna move on to regular business. Item A is an approval of Resolution Number 20-52, a resolution approving forms of documents and the pricing, sale, and execution of certificates of participation. And we have documents listed in our, in our box in our program. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Gentlemen, you may come up with a presentation. Please introduce yourself to the public that...
Todd Meyer Henry, C. Falls, your bond counsel. The only thing I'd like to point out in the resolution, we got the resolution, we had a couple last-minute suggestions. One, to change chairman to chairperson, and two, to, to indicate that these are the preliminary forms due to the fact that we haven't priced it, and all the numbers and all the blanks will be filled in. And as I was sitting there looking at Resolution 1713, I noticed one other typo. There's two 17-3s, which should be two 17-13, so if we can correct those, because 20, 17-13 was passed in April, and that's the, the original authorizing resolution that you guys passed with regards to the jail. And I feel embarrassed that I didn't catch that.
Are you saying, Todd, in paragraph number one, it should be 17-13?
Yes. As you can see in third paragraph, it's 13, it's correct. And then it's, and in section three, it's correct. And I thought in section one, it's incorrect. So we better make sure they all say 13.
There's, there's one more on the bottom of section three.
Yep.
In section two, right?
Yeah. And I just pulled it up on my phone. The resolution relating to lease purchase of county jail was Resolution 1713. So as long as we make sure that that is correct, and it was passed April 4th, 2017.
All right. Do we need to make an amendment to that effect?
I, I would make a motion to amend the resolution, to make paragraph number one be 17-13, paragraph, section one be 17-13, section two to be 17-13, and in the last, second to last line of section three, to be 17-13. Are those all the places, Todd?
Did you need to do, do anything else with signature lines from the chairman in this res, this amendment?
No, I didn't have them in there, so that would be part of them. It either can be published separately or part of the minutes, so I didn't know.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion? If not, we'll call the roll.
Pierce.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
So now we have a motion as amended. Comments you may have.
So, since it's been such a long-distance resolution, it was decided that we should at least present to the public what are the preliminary forms of the document, file them with the finance office, so anybody who's interested can come in and see them. The, the second part is to basically approve the forms, and then tell Colliers, which is, used to be Doherty in the original resolution, who's been purchased by Colliers, to proceed in the pricing of these certificates of participation, and, and get them rated, et cetera. And that's what this resolution does direct it. And when, once we have a pricing, we fill out the final forms, we're gonna do a closing, then those final forms will be attached to Resolution 17-13, as, as originally was drafted. And I guess at this point, I'd hand it over to, to Tom, because he's ready to go price these before the election.
Right. So Tom Gremmern from Collier Securities, formerly Doherty and Company. Yeah, we've been, been waiting to do this for, for a few years now, and just been hanging on, and it's finally coming to fruition. We're ready to, we've already put together a preliminary official statement, which is our offering documents to the public, and I'd like to thank Dickie for, she went to town and gave me all the information in like two days when we were moving forward, but then we started to look at this, and this is, this is the, the action we've come up with, to kind of bring the two together from 17 all the way up to 2020. So we've kind of put a stop on that, but after this motion today, or the approval, hopefully, is that we'll go out to the rating agency, we'll get, we'll set up a call with them. We'll, that'll take about a week to get the call going. We've got our documents in near-final form here, and then we just kind of go from there. It'll be two weeks after the call, we'll get a rating, and then we'll be able to price the bonds. Interest rates are very good right now. You know, the Fed has talked about leaving rates where they're at for the next couple of years. I don't, I don't expect any surprise in October or early November, depending upon when we, we get, get the rating and are ready to move forward, but we'll be able to lock interest rates at that time. I guess I'd like to point out, though, even with these documents, we're still staying with the original form, whereas the final maturity was 2037, was, which was part of the original documents, and the original dollar amount was, I think, 7.4 million dollars. So none of that has changed.
Except the interest rate's gonna be a lot lower than it was in 2017.
I think the interest rate will be a little bit lower, and, and hopefully, that'll, that'll equate into lower taxes next year when you levy. But, but anyway, no guarantees.
Any questions? Commissioner Pierce?
Not, not necessarily a question, but just a comment. Todd and Dan and I had a telephone conference yesterday, and what I hadn't known when we were all talking about the bond stuff, and I think it's important for us all to understand, is these documents wrap our 2012 bond and our 2020 bond together now. For, you know, remember, we owe about a million dollars on that bond from 2012, and we're still making payments on that. We pay about $120,000 a year, two semi-annual payments. This wraps all of that together, which I hadn't realized we would be doing, but it keeps, it'll keep them separate. We will still make our separate payment on our 2012 bond, and our separate payment on this bond. And I guess my question for Tom on that, we're estimating about 500,000. Are you still thinking that's pretty close?
Yes. Yep. Should be, should be real close to that, and, yeah.
And one of the questions that we had yesterday, and everybody said we had to ask you this, okay, so, we did our initial resolution in 2017. This bond will still be for 20 years, or will it be for 17 years?
For seven, for, well, for 17 years. I think, I think we came to that conclusion, that we were gonna stay to that same parameter.
Okay.
Because in, in 17, 20 years was 37.
Exactly.
So we were gonna stay to that, and, unless I'm wrong.
That's correct.
But that's, that's the intent. I think we talked about that the last time I was here, three, four weeks ago, was that, that the end date would stay the same.
Okay. And nothing that's in this prevents us in December of 2022, if we chose to pay off that first bond, we could still do that, whatever the balance is, and then cut down on those interest payments that we're making. We'd still have the opportunity to do that. And do I understand correctly that this new bond has to be in place for 10 years before we could prepay? Will that still be the same, or?
Yeah, it's, there's a, there'll be a call provision. Right now, we've seen, you know, we're on 20-year bonds, you know, six to seven years before it starts to affect the interest rate. You pay a little bit higher interest rate, if you go any shorter, you really don't gain anything by having a longer call date. So we're looking at probably six to seven years before you could start prepaying the bonds, calling bonds. And we'd like to point out, again, you used the word "wrap." I just want to make sure everybody understands that that, that original issue will stay outstanding. That'll be the first original bond under this indenture. That'll stay outstanding, and I don't remember what the final term is on that bond, off the top of my head, but it will stay outstanding until that time period, unless you pay it off early. We're not extending the term on that bond. We, we're not doing anything with that bond, except these bonds will be parity with those bonds, meaning, I think First National Bank owns all those bonds, or, I'm sorry, First Bank and Trust owns all those bonds, and these bonds will be sold on parity under the same indenture. So this will be a supplemental indenture. The, the documents you just approved today, the draft documents, this will be the first supplemental indenture to those bonds. So everything kind of gets in parity. If you, if you're like Minnaha County, or Pennington County, you've got, you're, you're working on your, your 16th or 18th amendment to those documents, you know, for some of the stuff that they've done. One of the reasons why, I guess I'd like to point out, is that as we were doing this and getting this going initially, the property that's gonna be encumbered, I believe, is block nine, or block eight, block nine, and, and that's gonna be the same block. So it's the same block that you're already, already have pledged for the ground lease on the original documents, on the original lease. So, so we can't do new documents, we have to do an amendment to the documents.
So the first one, 61, 2032, is the last maturity date of the, the first certificate issued.
What happens at the end that I thought was interesting, is when it's all paid off, then whoever ends up being the trustee gives us a quitclaim deed back for that property. Kind of interesting.
Any interest they own, they quitclaim it back to the county.
Well, yeah. Yes and no. Again, the new property is gonna be encumbered by block nine of this one, so technically, this, that block will, that block will still be in, yeah, you'll be released from that leasehold, but you're gonna be, you're still gonna be encumbered until 37.
Right.
Still on that block.
But in 37, we get a quitclaim.
Is what we're talking about, is.
Oh, I, I heard 32. I thought I heard 32.
No, no, in 32, in 32, nothing will occur. We might, because it's a dual issue, we haven't, I haven't had this happen, we might file with the auditor certi, or get something that the county gets, saying, okay, you now are the leasehold owner of the property, the original courthouse improvement, but it won't be giving the ground lease and everything else back to the county. But we'll, I, I hopefully will still be around, and if not, my daughter just started practicing law with me two weeks ago, so if I'm not here, she's learning all about this. And if, as, as, as Commissioner Pierce said, these are weird-looking financing documents, and I said, yes, they are. It's a different type of financing mechanism, but it's exactly the way the South Dakota Building Authority finances university buildings, which the Board of Regents don't. So it's the same model.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation, if you have nothing else.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the commissioners? As soon as we're ready to vote, call the roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen. Let's go back here. Item B, an action to approve Resolution Number 20-53, a resolution to continue support for the First District Association of Local Governments during fiscal year 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments? Any comments on that resolution? Hearing none.
I would just say, I, I would just say that the amount of dues is the amount budgeted for in our budget for fiscal year 2021 that we just passed.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C is compromise and settlement of a county aid lien. Item one under that item is an action to approve Resolution Number 20-54, a resolution releasing a county aid lien. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. And do we have an explanation from Michael Hauser?
Yes, the, this, this person had found that the, the county was held liable based on the review of the records. We had sent out notices to him. He did make the one payment. At that time, he was, he was married with one child, and he was in his twenties. The money can't get tight. At this point, it went a couple of years without him doing, or he made a payment, and then it went a couple of years, we'd lost track of him. Since that time, he is married, he does have three other children, and they're looking to purchase a home to raise a family in, a larger home. And at this particular point in time, I guess it'd be my suggestion to, to allow him to buy the larger house, or his first house, and then he would be paying property taxes on that and stuff, and have a better situation for his family.
Okay. Any questions or comments, questions? Commissioner Pierce?
What was the original amount of lien? Is any of that interest?
There liens don't have.
And it was originally, that lien was entered what year?
Um, gracious, I'm, I'm trying to think on that. 2012.
Okay. And he made one payment, so he knew about the lien.
He knew, he made a payment in 2013, and, or I guess, no, it's April of 2014. Since that time, you know, with people moving and stuff, we weren't able to keep track of his address. And then him and his, his wife went down to purchase a new home, they put a bid on it, they're actually closing on the 28th, and the lien came forward, and that's when he contacted us and said, what can be done? I said, you can do a compromise, it gotta be over 50% of what the amount is. His first offer was at 6,000. I said that I could not support the idea of a 6,000. He said the most he could do and still be able to close on his house would be 6,500. And that's how that number came about.
And I'm just gonna say, I'm opposed to this, and I won't be voting in favor of it. We don't have an obligation to track people down on those liens. He knew about the lien, it was in place. We take minimal payments. He could have made minimal monthly payments for the last seven years, and he chose to ignore the lien, and I don't see why the taxpayers should not receive the full amount that he owes on the And he chose to ignore the lien. And I don't see why the taxpayers should not receive the full amount that he owes on the lien.
Any other comments? Any comments from Dan?
Had he lived in Brookings the whole time or moved out of?
Uh, he was gone for a short period of time, not very long. At that particular point of, after, after the hospitalization, he did go back and he was attending school. And that's part of when he was gone. Yeah, since that time, he has gotten a degree. And I guess, you know, during that period, while when he's in school, he couldn't make much for payments, especially with the family. So. And like a lot of, a lot of things, he, he forgot about it. I can tell you, based on my experience with the veterans and the bonus, that five years is a long time for people to keep track of different things that are going on and stuff, but.
I owe somebody $12,000. I'm going to remember that for more than five years. I just, it bothers me that we know he knew about the lien because he made one payment. And then he just chose because he moved to disregard that it was an issue. And I, I have a problem with that.
I'm going to vote for it. Um, I just, you know, tough time for him, medical, something he probably couldn't control. Um, that's, and we were there for him, recovered it, that kind of thing. Um, and went through school, raising a family, buying a house now. Um, I, I think we should accept this, let him move forward and become a, uh, you know, tax-paying citizen and, uh, and stuff like that, and raise his family and keep going. So, um, I'm, I'm going to go vote for this and want to see him move on and buy a house.
Um, we had a similar situation before us a couple of years ago. I abstained from voting on that one. Um, similar situation, and we rejected that one. Um, inconsistent with what before, circumstances are pretty much the same. I'll probably vote against this.
Any other questions or comments? Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Johnson.
No.
Pierce.
No.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Fails to pass. Didn't receive the majority. Thank you, Mike. Item two is an action to approve a satisfaction of a county aid lien. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a sec, lack, lack of a second. And again, this was related to the same question, right? Okay. Died for a lack of a second. All right. Item D is an action to approve resolution number 20-55, a plat of lot 2A of the Lake Ponset Heights addition, Christopher Madsen subdivision and government lots three and four in section five, township 112 north, range 52 west of the 5th prime meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Presentation from Mr. Hill.
This plat was heard at our September 1st meeting. It is up at Lake Ponset. This is one where they're going out to the ordinary high water mark. And this is a procedure we've been doing since 2006. Uh, up in this particular development, they, they've got a situation where a lot of the houses are built either straddling the original 40 by 40 line, or some of them is not even within the 40 by 40 actual property line. State law does allow it to go out to the ordinary high water mark in this situation. And, uh, my planning and zoning board heard it September 1st and approved it unanimously. And we sent it to this board with the recommendation that you approve it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Bob, from your pictures here, it looks like a few people have done this already.
Yes, sir.
Yep. And these three are there coming in, are kind of filling in the other ones.
The, the very first time that I, since I've been here, it's 2006, was the first instance that we, that we had. And that's a guy wanted to build his house. He was a, a gentleman. He got hold of a law firm, firm in Sioux Falls. They did the research and they came out and figured out how they could, they. He actually come, at that time, he combined two lots, but then they went ahead and put it out to the ordinary high water mark.
And so the water's over the high water mark right now from this picture.
Correct.
Yeah.
And it doesn't affect the building. We had some questions sent that I, I did answer via email. It doesn't affect the building of the actual thing itself, because we, it still goes from the, from the known high water mark. See, there was a difference in the ordinary high water mark versus the high water mark. The high water mark is when we look at the historical things and flooding and all that. And the highest known water mark is where they have to have that 75 feet from when they build a house. Majority of these are variance. Number one, they're variance because they're 40 by 40 lots. And they're always end up having to have a variance if they're going to build anything. And number two, on taxes, uh, the, the equalization department, I stopped down there yesterday, and they actually do it on the frontage up against the lake. They don't, they don't go by square footage. So they're not taxing the stuff out in the middle. You know, they record that, let's say it's got 18,000 square feet. But what they're taxing lakefront property on is the frontage, like if they got 82 feet of front, lake frontage. That's what their taxes are based on.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Pierce?
I, I did have a, a lot of questions, and I talked to Bob and I talked to Ryan. And I, I thought it was unusual that we're planting land that's underwater. That what, that never happened while I was on planning and zoning. I had Bob's addressed. Um, one was that setback, that, that 75-foot setback that's there for the protection of the lake. This would not change anybody's setback on that. Um, this does not impact, if, Bob, if I'm right from what your research showed, anybody, the public's right as relates to the water that's out in front of that. So there won't be any, any changes in that. The only, the only thing we weren't sure of on the, um, on the restrictions the county places on lots is we have a 20,000, did I say that right? Requirement for a lot size.
That's actually state law.
Okay.
And this would not, if, if they came in and if one of these houses, let's say, this is a sanitary sewer district up there. So they, this is, it doesn't matter. But if they, then they would have to have a sealed holding tank because they're less than 20,000 square feet. And going out in the middle of the, like, like this is not going to, is not going to affect that number at all. I mean.
And, and, and I'll, I'm going to vote for this, but I just wanted to say, because I don't think any of those things were addressed at planning and zoning. And, and if there's somebody in the public that wants to know why we're planting land out there and how that, that's underwater and how this impacts all that, those are the things that the commission looked at. So, thank you.
And codified state law allows you to go out to the ordinary high water mark in, in this situation. So that's why we are allowed to do it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Any questions? If not, we'll call the roll.
Pierce.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Motion carries.
It is 9:45. Item C on our agenda is a discussion of mitigations at the railroad crossing on County Road 13, Cornell Avenue and 486th Avenue in the city of Elkton. Greg Nelson, Greg, would you please come on up? Greg couldn't make it. Whoever you are, come on up and make a presentation. Please identify yourself.
Well, I just got through into this a few minutes ago. Hi, my name is Scott Stufen. Um, I'm here representing the city of Elkton. And, um, I'm, County Road 13, is that what you said it was? I don't even know what county road it is for sure. Um, but Cornell Avenue in Elkton, we were approached by the railroad about putting in, um, crossing arms and signal lights on that intersection due to a high accident in the area. They said it's one of the 10th worst crossings in the state of South Dakota for accidents. Department of Transportation approached us about putting in crossing lights. Well, we met with them, and they said that we would need to come to the county commission to get permission to put on crossing lights there due to it's a county road. Um, uh, there's been four crashes there in, since 2010. Uh, the first one, I've got a list of them here. I'm sorry I didn't have anything real made out, but I just found out I was coming to this about eight o'clock last night. But what they want to do is they just want to get your permission to move ahead with putting the crossing lights in the, in, on that intersection. The project is, uh, scheduled to start in 2022. Uh, the projected cost of the project was 250,000 to 260,000, with 90% of that being covered by federal funds. And the remaining 10% would be up to the county or the city of Elkton, which they said would be probably 25, uh, 30,000 dollars. And I, I do have the information here on my phone, but I just got the email on my way here.
Brian, you got any info on the?
Yeah, I've worked through situations like this before, and typically our cost share is tying back in to the new crossing. We did three crossings, uh, down in Yankton, similar to this. And our cost share is basically the work to tie our road back into it. I spoke with Lance Berger from the South Dakota Department of Transportation about this, and it's a similar situation. Um, but I think from my understanding, talking with Greg, is they were just kind of wondering what type of a cost share we'd share with the city of Elkton on this.
So your recommendation to us would be the cost share of tying it back into the crossing?
Or, or similar type of work. I mean, it, it's usually not a, a whole lot of change. Um, as far as any of our right-of-way was, would go, because the, the work that the railroad would be doing would be, be within their right-of-way. Uh, the costs that we'd be looking at incurring to the railroad would be, uh, while we're working within the railroad right-of-way, tying back in, uh, we would have to pay for their flagger to be there while we're doing that work. Like a, a flagging type situation. There again, every, every situation's a little bit different, but, uh, at this point in time, I think the city of Elkton's just looking for that answer. Are we going to participate? Um, previously, we would have to sign an agreement with the DOT at that time, uh, so we can negotiate with the city of Elkton on, on what percentage we would provide. I, I know this is 100% Brookings County Road, but it does go through the city of Elkton. Um, but at that time, with the agreement from the DOT, we would have the exact amount of what our percentage would be.
Any estimate?
At 250,000 at 10%, you're looking at 25,000 bucks. Uh, whether or not we want to split it 50/50, or if we want to take over the 25,000, I guess that's up to you guys as commissioners, but that would be kind of the, my estimate.
Any questions or comments?
Have, have you discussed as a, as a city, um, what you're asking for from us in a cost share?
Yeah, we, we discussed this at the city council meeting, and we just, we were told by them that we needed to come to you guys to get permission to move ahead with the project. And like he said, they were just looking to see what percentage you would be able to fund with them, or to get it on your agenda or into your budget for 2022.
Well, it's either agree to participate, and then we'll work out the percentage later. Does that still work out?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm not willing to say tonight it's 50/50 or the whole 100% of the 25,000, but as long as you get our permission to proceed with the project, is that sound reasonable?
That's what they want. They wanted to get your permission to proceed with the project.
I give permission. Um, I believe when we did the one through Aurora, the county picked up the, the 10% or whatever, the city of Aurora didn't really participate. It was kind of more of a county project, so.
Right.
I'd, I'd lean towards, uh, picking up the 10% myself.
Okay. Do we need a motion to that effect to allow them to proceed? I think it probably.
This wasn't on the agenda for action today.
I'm sure there'll be agreements coming forward from.
Right. Yeah, the agreements would be coming from the DOT prior, you know. So I mean, at this point in time, I think, in my opinion, is, is they got our grace unless that's something that you guys don't want to do.
I think we should have a motion.
Well, it says discussion, so I mean, can we have action on this?
Well, your, your action is not to approve. The action is to agree to move forward. That the, that we'll, we'll participate, just not in any certain amount at this point.
And it might not come back to us until 2022. That's why I think we should maybe have a motion so we got a record that, what we did.
Can we?
Stacy, is there any reason? I thought it said possible action.
No.
Does not?
No.
It says this.
It does not.
Okay. Well, then we can't.
It's something that I could put on for action. It's your next, on your next agenda, if you want to basically action that you will, give permission and assist with the, with the project.
All right, we'll do it that way. I mean, it really doesn't slow you down much. We'll put it on a future agenda.
I mean, just for the record, I'm, I'm more given permission. And I just want to look back at consistency of what we've done in the past at the railroad crossings, so we say consistent with other cities.
That's all they were looking for, I believe, was just to get your guys, get it on your sights, that they're planning on doing it.
Yeah, I, I would certainly support it. So we'll put it on a future agenda.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll bow back to regular items. E is an action to approve resolution number 20-56, a plat of lots 2B and 3A of Lake Ponset Heights addition, Christopher's Metson subdivision of lots three and four in section five, township 112 north, range 52 west of the 5th prime meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Bob, presentation?
This plat is similar to the, the plat 018. We heard it on September 1st, approved by the planning and zoning board and sent to this board with the recommendation that you approve it.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the commission? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F is an action to approve resolution number 20-57, a plat of Sioux Brook Farms addition in the southeast quarter of section 20, township 109 north, range 49 west of the 5th prime meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. A report? Do you have a report, Bob?
Just.
You're waiting until it comes up here? Okay.
Yeah, we heard it on September 1st and, um, approved it, and we sent it to this board with the recommendation that you approve it. Just agricultural land being, being planted.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the, from the commission? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G is an action to approve agreement number 20-51, an American Institute of Architects agreement between Brookings County and Borman Cruise Global Group, Inc., for the Brookings County Detention Center Expansion Project, and amend agreement number 17-34. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Stacy, would you like to talk about this resolution or agreement?
This, um, reflects changes due to the longevity of the jail expansion project, BKV. Um, for those who are listening, and as the architects, we've been working with them since 2016 on this project. Um, the one thing that was noted that we had asked originally for was an end date to the contract of April of 2023. But now with the commencement of the project, BKV is suggesting April of 2022. Um, Bruce Schwartzman did say that they would assist with the 11-month review um, after the completion of work, any, with anything that has a 12-month warranty on it.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Johnson.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item H is an action to approve agreement number 20-52, an agreement with Architectural Incorporated, or Incorporated, for the provision of limited professional services and amending agreement number 20-46. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Stacy, you have a report?
So this is for the project down in the finance office to put in some petitions and some permanent, uh, safety glass. We approved something similar to this. This is the more formal agreement. Uh, their design. Uh, their design services is based on an hourly not to exceed of 6,500. I have been working already with the Dallas Wilman with Arc Inc. on some of the design aspects of this project already. So we're, you know, we're already slowly moving forward on it. It's really about it. We just are trying to get some of this moved forward so that we can get this, uh, done and build yet in this year.
Thank you. Any questions? Did we, uh, Vicky, is this COVID reimbursable?
It is not.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Pierce.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item I is in.
Mr. Chair, may I be out of order for a moment? On the motion with our architect for the jail, I was counting when, and I should have said I wasn't ready to vote, but April of 22, am, am I counting my months incorrectly there? We're figuring 20 months to completion from the time we start building, right? Will we be done in April of 22?
Henry Carlson said it would be in 18 months, so that's why they make the change.
So that's.
Our agreement with Henry Carlson is 18 months.
Okay.
That's, that's the reason for the change.
And, and that lines up however we're counting our months. Thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't get that asked.
That's fine. All right, uh, we're back on, uh, item I is an action to approve agreement number 20-53, an application for occupancy of right of way of county highways made by Otter Tail Power Company in Elkton Township. Is there a motion to approve?
Some of.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded. Any comments? Pretty standard, Brian?
This is within the city limits of Elkton. They're basically going down the right of way to feed a new house, uh, on the west side of the road.
All right, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item J is an action to approve agreement number 20-54, an application for occupancy of right of way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy in Midary Township. Motion to approve?
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Any comments?
Uh, this is just off of our lot, uh, kind of on the first curve south on 77, uh, and county road 12 intersection there. Uh, just boring underneath the road.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, we're down to, I believe, item K, which is an action on a payroll tax deferral. Is there a motion to approve?
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made in seconded. And Vicky, do you give us an explanation on this or Stacy? Stacy, would you give us an explanation, please?
Actually, I think I'd like Dan to maybe help me speak to this item.
All right.
We're actually looking for action to withdraw from that deferral.
Do any of the three of you have knowledge on, we've got the right to opt out, right?
Yes.
And that's what you're looking for? You're, you want us to have a motion that we will opt out of the payroll tax deferral?
Yes.
And I would, that motion I would make. I, but that is that, what was the motion we just?
Yes. Well, you know, that's a good question because it just says action on the payroll tax deferral, so.
Right, I, that, that was the way it was going to be framed, was action to withdraw by the commission.
So the motion should be action to withdraw.
To opt out of the payroll.
To opt out of the payroll.
Tax deferral program.
My understanding, the tax deferral means, it doesn't mean we're, we're just deferring the, the payment of the taxes, not necessarily. Correct. Giving up. Correct. Money or anything like that. We're just denying the chance to defer and, and just continue our payroll. Right, because you have to pay all this back. You can defer not to pay it and then these employees would have to pay it back, but it's not required that.
We're not going to offer our employees that option.
Right.
So that they don't have their, um, social security and Medicare portion of, of their tax withheld every time they get paid. We're going to keep withholding and submitting. That's what the opt-out does.
And matching, we match.
And we match that. We didn't get to opt out anyway, I don't believe. It was just the employee, but it's, in my opinion, such a, a bad, um, way for our employees who, I mean, they get that money now and it adds all up and they got to pay it back, I think in January. It's, it'll be a mess to administer.
Yeah, sometime next spring, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just, just a nightmare all the way around. It, it's bad policy, I think, and we don't have any employees, am I correct, that are asking for it?
No.
All right, since we made a motion to approve payroll tax deferral, uh, do we want to amend that real quickly? Say to opt out of the payroll tax deferral?
I would do that.
Is there a second? Okay, motion been made to change that to opt out of the payroll tax deferral. Any comments or questions? All right, on this one, everybody in favor say aye of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed nay. Now we have the amended payroll tax deferral to opt out of that. Is there any other discussion? No other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. All right, moving right along, we're down to our commission department director's report. Stacy?
As Vicky had said, I had put the general plan surplus, uh, estimate in your packet along with my report. So as Vicky had said, we're at just over the 25% uh, for August month end, which is just over the 10-year average of 22.4%. Also included with my staff report is information where each department is at with their share of the budgeted health insurance risk amount. So we're at about 58% of the 30% we budgeted for, uh, this budget year for our risk. Um, we're at about 80% of the year complete so far. Uh, it was requested to have Sheri Matthews with Wellmark come or maybe call into a future meeting. We're working on getting her to do that to just to kind of discuss, um, after, kind of where we're at with this year since we made the plan changes. So I think we're in pretty good shape there. Um, also included with my staff report is the invitation for the groundbreaking. I had kind of reached out and asked if anyone had anyone specific that you would like to, like me to invite to that on Friday, October 2nd at 4 o'clock. Uh, please just let me know that. Uh, just shoot me an email if you, you have someone in mind or some names in mind of people that you would like me to specifically invite to that event. Um, in my staff report, I won't read through it, but I did attend the fall convention last week, last Monday, Tuesday. And I gave a quick synopsis of the things that, um, the different sessions that I attended. Um, I was able to find some money in the budget for this year on the Renault Drive project over at the courthouse. They were actually here last week and, and installed those systems. So I was, um, excited to get that in place and hopefully that will help preserve our county courthouse moving forward. Also, I'm looking for a couple of things, uh, from the board, some consensus on a couple of different things. One is to advertise for a supplemental budget hearing. I think Vicky had mentioned in her report that we will be needing that, uh, here before the year end. So could I get, uh, consensus from each of you that we can go ahead and advertise for that supplemental budget?
Any objection? So without objection.
Okay, and then the last consensus is I, um, I had Rob Zalinski reach out to me yesterday about the, um, Brookings County 4-H livestock judging team. And if you recall, last year the county, uh, was able to give $500 to that group so that they could attend the national livestock judging contest. Well, this year we had a new group of 4-Hers and they won the state contest, the Brookings County group did. Um, Mr. Zalinski said this is the first time that Brookings County 4-H has won the state contest in many years. And again, this qualifies them for the American Royal Judging Contest to be held in Kansas City, Missouri in October. So what they're asking for is, um, and we would put this, uh, this would obviously go through as a claim in the next, um, next claim cycle for official approval. But consensus, they're asking again for $500 to help offset some of the expenses to get those, um, those 4-H members down to that national competition. The team members are Emily Knoll, Drew Peterson, Reza Zalinski, Lindsay Vanderwall, Tyler Rasmussen, and Cody Larson. Um, I think last year you had, had asked that after the competition takes place that they come in and those, those kids give you an update on that event. And I think we could ask them to do that again if that's something you're interested, but, um, and we do have money in the public relations line for this once again for this year. So I'm looking for consensus to submit that claim.
Sounds good to me.
I'm fine. Any other questions? All right, is that your report?
And then just the upcoming day, uh, we do, just a reminder, have that county tour. That's also on Friday, October 2nd. We're going to leave at 8:30, uh, in the morning from the highway department. And we will drive around the county to some of the, to various sites and then groundbreaking that afternoon at 4 o'clock at the detention center site. And just make sure you have on your calendars that department head reviews are Tuesday, October 27th. Uh, we'll start at 8:00 AM. We'll start in the chambers, move into exec session to conduct those department head reviews. Um, you should be wrapped up by, I'm, I'm hoping by 12:30-ish or so that day. That's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Stacy? Commissioner Pierce?
Question. Stacy, are you thinking there's going to be a gap between the tour and the, um, open house or the groundbreaking, excuse me? If, if not.
We hope to be back about 3 o'clock from the tour, so there should be about an hour-ish break in between those two events.
We always run late on that. I just wonder if it wouldn't be better if we left from here. We just had the, the bus come over and pick us up. So we'd have our cars here if we are going straight to the groundbreaking.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we can do that. I can line that up.
That would be better.
Stacy, I, I may have to, uh, meet you somewhere. Uh, I have, something came up on the 2nd in that morning that I have to be at, the closing for work, and so, um, I will maybe be getting in contact with you to try to join you, uh, on the tour, so.
Okay.
Any other questions for Stacy? Hearing none, we'll move on to the state attorney's office report, Dan.
Nothing new to report.
And we'll move on to the commissioner reports and any discussion items. We'll start with Commissioner Pierce.
On, uh, September 3rd, the Public Affairs Committee hosted, uh, online lunch meeting with Senator Rounds, which was fun. I mean, it was interesting process, how all of this works out. That was followed by our public affairs meeting. And then after our public affairs meeting, there have been a lot of emails exchanged about whether or not the commission, the, um, chamber ought to be taking a position on the marijuana initiatives. And I don't know if you all have any directions to me as our, as the liaison to the, uh, chamber on, I, I lean toward, I don't know that we need to take a position on that, that, for the, for the county, I don't think that's something we necessarily need to be voting on or, or saying anything. I see Dan might have a comment.
I agree.
You know? But I think when it comes time, well, we're going to talk about that more at our next public affairs meeting and, and I just am not sure that that's something that we need, and we're, it's on the agenda for BEDC for tomorrow too. So what, do you have any direction to me, to those two entities as relates to the county's position?
We shouldn't take a stand.
Should not take a stand, okay? I'm good with that. And then, um, I attended the, the lead around table meeting, talked a lot about schools. And, um, last Friday, when early voting began, I have to tell you all, I was the first person in Brookings County to vote early voting. I made a point of that. I really want to encourage anybody on the, uh, listening public, please come in early and vote. There is a difference between absentee voting and early voting. You can come in any day, Monday through Friday, and I know Jen already said this, but I want to say it again. Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, vote. There aren't any lines. Uh, everybody's, we have masks on, we've got everything ready to go. And that will cut down on standing in line on the day of the election. So once you know how you're going to vote on things and sample ballots are available, please come in and vote whenever it's convenient for you here at our building. And then, uh, yesterday, I did a, participate with Dan and Todd Meyer Henry in a conference call regarding the documents that we approved on the bond, which is just quite an interesting process. That's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Krogman?
Uh, I don't have a report.
Commissioner Jensen?
Uh, like I said, on the 10th, uh, we had our weed tour. I kind of talked about that earlier. On the 13th, uh, went down to the state convention, uh, along with Commissioner Bartley. We participated in the first annual, uh, golf social event with the, um, fellow commissioners from other counties, uh, some other officials. And it was a nice event, uh, nice weather and got to meet some new people. On, uh, Monday, attended a couple of meetings. Uh, there was a county water management drainage issue meeting. Um, I attended the equipment and product demos, uh, some new equipment, new products that were introduced. Uh, also sat in on a legislative audit and budget balance, budget balances and bid laws. Interesting, uh, sat in on a county and township collaboration. Uh, basically townships are looking for a little support from the counties, uh, towards some funding on some small structure, uh, issues they're bringing forward to the legislature. And also in our, uh, business meeting, uh, they held that in the morning of the last day, so make sure that we had a quorum. Uh, one of the resolutions they're putting forward this fall would be, uh, uh, support from the state to upgrade the road to the new veteran cemetery down in, uh, by Sioux Falls. Uh, it's about a mile and a quarter of gravel right now. They want to upgrade that road and they're looking for state participation in that project. That's all I have.
All right, I also attended the state, um, meeting and, and golfed, not real well, but did golf. You know, when we look at the meetings, I attended a lot of the meetings Larry did and, and, uh, there was one that was kind of towards the end and it was a COVID, basically, conversation with Mayor Tenhaiken and one of the, uh, county commissioners down there. And, uh, it flowed pretty well. It was informative that they're doing their thing and other counties are doing theirs and we're, and the city of Brookings is doing theirs in the county, of course. We don't have authority to do anything else, but, uh, uh, it was a good conversation. Mayor Tenhaiken really thanked the South Dakota County Officials Organization for hosting their meeting, uh, in person. It was well done by the, by the hotel. It kept people separated. All the meeting rooms had ample separation and, and, uh, and it worked well and he was happy that they could actually talk to some people, uh, besides being on a Zoom meeting for a change, so, uh, he had some interesting comments, so. Uh, that completes my report. With that, we have an executive session in accordance with South Dakota Code of Law 1-2, 5-2, parentheses 1, 3, and 4. Personnel consulting with legal counsel and contract negotiation. Is there a motion to move into executive session?
Some of.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay. Motion passes. We will take a five to 10-minute break and meet in executive session. Thank you.